Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council for Monday, December 11th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Pastor?
The older you get, the colder the winters are.
We were waiting for you.
Sorry. From Isaiah, Chapter 9. "For to us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. And of the increase of his government and of peace there will be no end." Father, we just thank you for this time together. We look forward to the day when Jesus rules the earth, and there will be peace. Until then, you have left it to us. We pray your blessing on all the governments of the earth, and especially on this one in Tracy. May your will be done with grace, love, and honor, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number four, we have approval of the minutes from the meeting on November 27th. Anybody have any questions or comments about those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We have number five, approve of the agenda. Anybody have any additions or deletions to the agenda as it's been presented?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Do you want this changed, too? There's one correction on the split liquor license for the Eagles, from quarterly to annual. That's under 10(c)(2).
Okay.
And the other one is under 12 resolutions.
Yep.
12g Resolution 2017-105 Secretary Certificate Regarding Corporate Resolutions.
Okay. Yep. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And number six, anybody have any conflicts of interest they want to identify and put on the record that they could see in the agenda or our packet? Okay, hearing none. Public comment? Does anybody here from the public want to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Okay. We don't have, yeah, we will, we'll talk about that, so. The public hearing is not till 6:45, so let's go to 10A. We have the employee wages with ASME, and you have in your packet what we had negotiated, I don't know, two weeks ago, one week ago. Anybody have any questions or comments about what's in there?
Make a motion to approve the contract.
I would second that.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, Wendell couldn't make it today, but we have on our desk the recommendations that he has. So it's an update on the administrator position. He's requesting that we extend the application time period for two more weeks. They've only had six applicants as of today, which was, I know it's not dated, but we got it today. So it's December 11th. And he gives other recommendations that he would suggest that we follow. So.
Did he make any comments about the six that he had received? I didn't see he didn't list any here.
No, other than what's in here, there was nothing extra. So, I mean, first of all, I think we can certainly say if he wants to extend it two weeks, I mean, I think that's fine. And he suggests delaying the hiring process for a minimum of three months, and other suggestions in there, so. If we want more time to think about it, we can, but I don't know if we want to adopt these recommendations or have any discussion about it now.
Based on everything that's going on, I would lean more towards accepting Wendell's recommendations and then trying to locate an interim administrator to relieve some of the workload and other things. Somebody that may know somebody that actually helped us recruit someone for the position. The rest of them all make sense.
Yeah, I mean, with the recommendations, the only one that I take pause on is getting the interim, because I know we talked about that before and the expenses quite a bit. And I, and I understand what his recommendation, new contract with people to give you recommendations, I get that. I don't, I don't think I necessarily would be in favor of getting an interim at this point. Partly just the expense is too much. And I, and I can understand the logic of doing it, but.
Doing the math, just for the sake of argument, doing the math from what he quoted us last time, that's mid-range of what we'd be paying for an administrator. Anyway, I mean, it falls right between the salary range he put out there, and arguably, it's only 20 hours a week, but it, I think we'll get more benefit out of it than we will.
Yeah, when we had the discussion at the previous meeting, I think Shane, you had indicated you're fine with it, provided it doesn't go like into.
March, April is in the sixties.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a recommendation in the hiring, about the three months after you're looking at March, April.
As long as it don't get into the summer.
Well, I, no, I understand the logic of it, but I just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, because of the expense, and I think, based on Shane telling us at a meeting that it's, she's able to do it, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's worth the expense. So that, that, that's my view. I mean, if we want to talk about these individual recommendations one at a time, we can, but it seems like we probably would all agree with everything except number five, and we can discuss five more if we want to. So if, if, looking at, well, let's see what the other one.
I think we should bring it up again in December and just see where we're at then, too.
This is December.
I mean, January, sorry.
Wendell's blowing pretty hard.
Yeah, it blew it out of me.
Well, let's, yeah, let's do that, then. If everywhere, we can talk about it, then, at the meeting in January, but have this and think about it more, since we just got it today, and we can make a decision in January. All right? All right. 6:45 yet? All right, um, we talked about B1. Let's go to C, approval of various licenses. We got C1 cigarette license for Food Pride, Liquor Store, Casey's, Dollar General, and Family Dollar. Yep.
Motion to approve those cigarette licenses as listed.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Oh, you want discussion?
Yeah. Further on down the line here tonight, just talking about the liquor store, some of the options that are out there. Is it a wise expenditure of money for that license now, or just let it go and quit selling it first?
Yeah, I think we had talked about that previously, that it's not really worth it. But I don't know whether it stops people from buying liquor there.
But wouldn't we be, if we paid it now, wouldn't we get refunded if we don't use it the entire?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking. I don't think it is. I don't think it's refunded.
Do you have to buy it now?
Buy one later, if that's what you decide, but I think at this point, I wouldn't spend the money.
It would kind of determine, what determined that, who is, what they have for inventory. I don't know if that's a week-by-week thing, or.
Well.
Well, they don't have to buy it today. Can we do that one in January? Do they have to buy it before January, the liquor store?
Probably the turn of the year, isn't it?
Yeah, if they don't get it January 1st, they can no longer sell it. Is that what you're asking?
The one of January 15th, to say, yeah, we want you to do it, or they pass the one and no return.
No, I think you could do it.
You could still do it, but then you're technically out of compliance.
Do it January, and we see what the inventory is. All right, so, so we have a motion. What's, if there's a motion into grant the licenses for Food Pride, Casey's, Dollar General, and Family Dollar, is there a motion for that?
I would make that motion again.
I would second that again.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, and then we'll just table the one for the liquor store. 6:45 yet? No. All right, 10(c)(2) split liquor Sunday license, the Caboose, Bonnie and Clyde's, and the Eagles.
Make a motion to approve, as long as the fees are paid.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, plumbers license for Solstrom's Heating and Plumbing, G&amp;H Plumbing in Wilkes.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, dance license for the Caboose.
Motion to approve of that.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. That's close enough. All right, 6:45. We'll have the truth and taxation hearing that people would have gotten notice about, they want to come and talk about the levy. Shane, is there any little overview you want to give here for people?
Right now, we have reduced it from the preliminary. Like, we were at 14, 13.7%. We got it down to 3.40 right now, the way it's presented for tonight's meeting.
Is that it? All right.
For, in the budget, we had flowers out in 14. Do we know any more information on that? I know you sent that.
They were in here, because I kind of found out at the end.
I mean, it's in there, it's not going to hurt.
No. I mean, it would be money left in the general fund after the end of the year, so.
There's also wages in there for a new administrator, right?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody here from the public want to talk about the levy? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anne Prinsavilla Whitella, and I've been living in Tracy for 13 years. And I live at 549 First Street East, and it looks like my property is going to be assessed, and I knew this was coming when I bought the property. However, when I got the letter saying that all of us were going to be paying the same amount regardless of house size and lot size, I was a bit taken aback by that. I just feel that the assessments should be based on land size. And I believe wholeheartedly, we have to make improvements to our city, and I appreciate the improvements that we are making and the work that, that you all do for that. However, I've lived in Tracy 13 years and have commuted all those 13 years, and this is really giving me pause to think a little bit differently about that, and whether or not extra taxes is worth it for me to continue to live, to live in a small town. I might as well live in a bigger, bigger city with, with other services. So I just ask you to, to keep that in mind as you hopefully reconsider this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Wayne Anderson. I live at 930 Center Street South, and if I read the article in the paper right, if your house is valued at $100,000, the taxes for the Tracy portion would be $1,294. Does that hold true? Would it double if your house was worth $200,000? If it, if that's true, then I'm overpaying by about $1,100 a year. My, my property is valued at $206,000, and I live on the corner that, on both sides of me, a county road goes by. I pay for the sewer and the water and the garbage. The county takes care of the roads. And our taxes are $6 short of $5,000 a year. I think it's a little high. If the, if the formula is correct, then $1,294 a year, or per $100,000, that would make ours worth about $2,600, and we're paying $3,717 to Tracy.
I'm not sure if that's actually correct on the $100,000 house. Were those by age, property values, estate property values, and age and construction type?
The auditor has a formula on how they calculate that, how they break that down. And that's generated, you know, from the city's taxes and the county's taxes, so there's other things that are included in that? The auditor would.
Well, this is just the Tracy portion that I'm talking about. It's, it's $1,100 more than that formula. So this, out of that, nearly $5,000, the school gets about $650, and the county gets $618, and the city gets $3,700 and so on.
Okay. Anybody else?
My name is Jackie Lanou, and I live at 136 East Emery Street, and this is not my first time, so we basically know that I'm at the edge of the assessment. I did not get new water or sewer, but yet I'm getting charged for it, and I don't have those new hookups. I did, there's a new street that is like on half of my property, but my driveway was not affected, and then I have a fire hydrant put in the middle of my, front of my yard. So, and plus, I have a $40,000 house. I don't think I should have to pay the same amount as someone who lives on Long Green Lane that has a house valued at, what, $200,000, and got all-new curb and gutter on both sides of their house. I don't think I should have to pay more than my fair share. And I've, I guess that's it. And how does this process work? Because this is the third time we've discussed this. Do you make a decision, or do we just keep coming here and?
What was it, talk about the last meeting? I mean, because this deals with the levy that we're talking about. It has nothing to do with the assessments for the street projects. So that's a public hearing, it's for the levy, for someone to say.
Okay, so.
It's a different, it's a different thing.
Okay.
But the other issues were addressed at the last meeting, weren't they?
And so those are, you've already made your decision, and you're not going to do any more of that?
Whatever the decision was at the last meeting.
So, but you always have, okay.
Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public comment portion of it and refer this back to the council. Anybody have any questions or comments about the levy?
We're sure we got everything in it? Thank you for getting it down from 14% to 4.
Well, it's even below 4.
3.40.
Yep, 3.40. It's, I would.
Might I make this look better on the paper?
That should take a little bit of staying outweighing, but not a lot. I don't know, is that the one you have there, is that proposed?
This is the, proposed.
Yeah. That should go down. That was based on the 14%.
It was up $380 from last year.
That, that'll go down.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? We have a motion then to adopt the levy.
I'd make that motion to adopt our levy as it is.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you for the work on that, Shane, and everybody else at the city staff. It's appreciated.
You're welcome.
All right, 10D, we have motor vehicle driver's license and DNR appointment 2018.
So this is, Krista is our current appointee for that. This has to be done before the end of the year, otherwise it would go into the appointments for January, but it expires on the 31st, so we need to have someone established for this month going into 2018, so. Looking for a motion to appoint her again for that motor vehicle.
We have a motion?
So.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Snow hauling contract.
I put this on there just so we can move forward with any snow hauling contracts. If, once we get the paperwork together from people that normally haul from us, or anyone else that wants to start hauling. It's the same as last year. There's no increases or decreases from before, so. Just looking for approval before we enter any contracts with any of the contractors.
Motion approves your own contract.
I'd second that.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have work change directive number five for Phase 1, additional sand base that was needed on Center Street, and we had that in our packets.
So what this was, was a, was a change order with Dunick's. The county didn't like the road base that was there, so they requested they put a sand base underneath the county road through there. So what this is, is a past few things, we have the contract with Dunick, so they're going to reimburse us for that, work change directive. So, just looking for approval for that.
I'd make a motion for change, change line number five for Phase 1.
Second that.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, so we got the liquor store license discussion, and we had a liquor store committee meeting, and you've seen the memo that Shane had prepared, the things that we were talking about. I believe we've come to the realization that what's existing now isn't working in spite of our best efforts. So either one, we move the liquor store to 14, or we consider selling the license. Those are our two options. So we're exploring both possibilities and come back with a recommendation, I suppose, as to what we think we advise the council to pursue. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Is that 30% gross or net?
Yet to be determined.
That makes a heck of a lot of difference.
It wasn't specified.
No.
I recorded it, and I went back and.
It makes a huge amount of difference.
But there's nothing.
Because of 30%.
30% is just a number that was thrown out, too.
30% is ridiculous.
Agreed. But there is, we.
There's just room for discussion.
Right.
But basically, what this is, is saying what we have doesn't work. So the two options, as we see it, are move it or sell the license. Now, moving it and how it's operated, we obviously could work out those logistics, but the main point is bringing up that there are really only two options.
And you're looking roughly, if you use Tom's suggestion there, where he's managing it, and providing lease for part of the rolls, you're still looking at $100,000 to put coolers and equipment, or move from A to B. So that expense.
You're looking at more than that.
Well, I'm saying at least it was, that last time we looked at the numbers, and that was, last time I seen it was three years ago. It, it doesn't strike me as a cost-effective way to hang on to that particular enterprise fund.
And it's one of those liquor, we should probably get together again, either by the end of the year, or very early in January, to go through everything again, to present options.
Yeah, we could do that. Let's.
Along with that, we need to explore the possibility of removing the kitchen requirements from bar establishments, so maybe you could sell lease or rent that place, because it doesn't have a kitchen. So I don't know. From my research, the kitchen requirement's not a statement that they are listed for Sunday with food. I don't think you can get a split liquor license without being able to serve food, if I remember right. But that, that would be the only thing, they only, they would need to have a seven-day operation. But if you could remove that, and put that back in on the tax bills as a business, maybe they're off that building.
You mean, like, somebody come in there, an individual, and do a bar off cylinder again, you mean?
No, just to run the bar.
Just to run the, they could run it as a bar, we could sell it. But they, no one could walk in here today and say, I want to rent that bar side, because there's not a kitchen, so they can't open it up as a bar. So if we remove that from the ordinance, and, I don't know, I think it was there at the time, the city was holding one with the liquor, and this restaurant, private mall, private membership, and they do the food thing, so. The times have changed.
All right, well, we can discuss that and other items that we mentioned. Why don't we, well, it's got to be the first week of January, like, third, fourth, or fifth, if it's possible, to find out.
I'm on the town of fourth and fifth.
January 3rd.
January 3rd, what?
Works for me.
Works for you?
Here, 6pm.
Yep.
Day is that?
Wednesday. Then what we'll do is, we'll, we'll talk about it more than have a, a recommendation, hopefully.
Well, we'll be closer than we are today.
For a recommendation.
Yep.
6 o'clock?
6. Yep, here. All right, next, we got Bridge, Mel Klein.
Want me to?
Go ahead.
Well, let me start from the beginning on that. Couple, three weeks ago, Shane called me, he's got Mel at the city shop, wanted to talk to him. Back when we were trying to secure property, and finally got the property squared away, and where we're going to build it, he was, Mel called me, he was concerned about not being able to cross to his back property, because the creek would be running too deep, and he'd need a footbridge. And I said, well, I don't think that's the case. I said, but once it's built, if we need a footbridge, I said, I don't see a problem with getting the footbridge put in there. The discussions we had three weeks ago went to, now, just throw me a couple telephone poles over here, because I want to drive my bucket motor across. So, well, we're going to try and be good neighbors, we'll see what we can do if we need a bridge, we'll cross it when we get there. Now, it's culverts?
It's two concrete culverts.
And I, I go back to my original statement that I made to Mel, is if that pond system affects that property to the point where you need a bridge, you'd be a good neighbor and work something out. But we don't know what it's going to do until it's built. you'd be a good neighbor and work something out, but we don't know what it's gonna do until it's built.
We're only discharging, you know, twice a year. You know, over, probably two, three weeks at the most for time. Month on, on rate a year. So, I just want some direction, uh. I mean, the hearings have passed. We really don't have to do anything, but...
Just to be a good, I'd like to see what happens whether it's built and operated, so we, and I'm sure, you know, Mel wouldn't be happy that it didn't change anything. From a footbridge to concrete culverts is quite a leap. I was gonna, I'd been willing to buy the telephone poles, cause that's all he asked for last time we talked.
Yeah.
Throw a couple telephone poles for us, so.
Well, just, I would say just let them know, see what the impact is going to be, and then we would work something out with them. Alright, next, Chris, Christmas decorations and flower pots. And, uh, on fourteen in our new poles.
So I contacted Excel about the the snowflakes that we have up there, and they had told us to cease all projects regarding anything that attaches to their poles as they are changing their policies to what can attach to poles, and it didn't sound like decorations, flower pots, or anything else would be allowed to be connected to their poles when this new plan is put in place. So, right now, that's, I just wanted to let you guys know that that was brought up by Excel, the community relations manager, so.
They approached the city on that?
Well, I approached them.
About the?
About the height. So, like, no new poles, but yet they attached all the brackets for flag poles. Be nice to see flags on them yet, but see what I can get out of them, but...
Alright, so...
They're trying to kill everything that's unmetered too, so. And those decorations are, they have been for years, but...
I think they can work a little bit with the cities when they go through and do all that stuff.
That's where that's at. They said just, they'll let me know as soon as they find out any more information, so. I'll check back with them in a month.
And the flower pots? They don't want them up there either? What, what is, do we, what is their new policy? Are they still formulating it?
They want electrical wires and that's it.
Nice bare pole.
Yep.
What does a flower pot affect their pole?
They claim the wind catches them and which is why we had to take the banners, the banners that used to go over the highway. That's why they got rid of those, they usually, they used to help us put them up. But now they said... The wind.
I suppose it gets to a point to where do you stop, what do you allow and what do you not allow too?
Alright, well, that's nice.
Yeah. Figured I'd let you guys know that.
Any good news besides the budget numbers?
Uh, the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, isn't it much better?
Okay, next, uh, fire department, fiscal year fire department report. And we have that in our packet, anybody have any questions about that?
Don't seem quiet here.
Okay. Now we get to the bike path trees.
So, the bike path trees, um, I guess we weren't notified that things were gonna be affected until last week. Contractor called and asked if they could take some trees down. So I asked him how many trees, and they said about forty-two evergreens and twelve maples, so. Like, yeah, I'm gonna go out and look at it. Here they are, all along the bike trail. Well, what happened is, the initial plan didn't include the trees, but later they found out that that was in the flight approach path for the airport. So they had to shift it. When they shifted it, they went by the boundaries of our lot and not the actual field. So, now the site includes where the trees are. So, I asked them if there's any way we could move it further south, but not as far east. And the way it's all surveyed out, so that's kinda late in the game to change anything. So, right now they're looking at putting the trees in a park, moving them, or replacing them with new trees next spring. In the meantime, we had a individual that decided he was gonna move all the trees over the weekend to another lot, which is a whole other issue that is actually up to them to deal with, but... So there is no evergreens there right now. They're sitting out the boys repair. So things got real interesting today on the tree situation, so.
So they removed without us knowing it?
They asked about them, I told them until we knew they were gonna give us some pricing on it, if they were gonna pay for all of it, or if we'd assist with some of the moving costs. And then all of a sudden they're all gone this morning. We came to work, so over the weekend they removed, so. It's a whole other deal, um, I talked to the owner of the solar garden, and he's going to talk with them tomorrow. And then we'll kind of know where that stands after that, so.
So they just moved all the evergreens?
Yeah. The maple, they're still there, so. Technically, there's still our trees, so.
Oh, yeah, it's sad that they, this late in the game tell you they have to move forty-two trees, that's kind of a lot of trees to not tell somebody what the heck's going on.
We would've had to move.
That's crazy. And they're finally starting to grow up.
Yeah.
You know?
And they're still half, half of the roll going out there, they're still there, but the difference is that they're all in all.
Well, the ones they moved, by moving them, that's gonna be entirely their expense, we shouldn't be responsible for that.
I don't think we should have to help them do anything.
Technically, there's still a lot of trees.
Right.
Cause they're still looking at moving them for us.
Yeah.
So it's kinda hard to have them do that when they're gone, so.
Was it one of their employees that moved them, or just?
They did. There are a few parks I'd like to see them in.
And can you do that this late in the year?
They did.
Yeah. Will they grow, I mean, will they live, I should say, you can do it.
I don't know.
They'll live?
And that's the thing, they're, they're looking at replacing them for something similar to what size they were.
The size that they were?
So, I know the softball field needs a windbreak, um, Greenwood Park needs some trees, I mean, there's plenty of areas where we could've...
As long as they replace them with the size that they were.
Yeah. Let's see what they come up with. He's flying in tonight, and he's gonna talk to them and give me an update. So, kinda up to them as far as their contract is. We actually had a tree service hired to relocate them or take them down or whatever they're gonna do with them. And they weren't there this morning, so. Kind of a unique situation. I guess that's what's happening there.
Any questions about that? I don't even know what to ask.
If the contractor, contractor said stranger things have happened, but this is a new one, so.
Alright.
So you're meeting with him tomorrow, or?
No, the owner of the solar farm is, and then he's gonna report back to me, so.
Alright. Next, feasibility study for new hangar at the airport.
So this was discussed actually at the last meeting.
I asked Diane to put it on the agenda tonight. Bowlett needs something in writing from us.
Okay.
Say we authorize that feasibility study to go ahead, I don't know if it requires a resolution or, or...
I think there was a, there was a motion for it last night.
Yeah, I was just looking at it.
I would think so. I talked to him last week, but they had no mention of needing anything yet from it, so, but...
Special motion, you can just maybe certify that, the motion has passed.
Yeah. Phone it earlier.
I did too, and I moved it.
Yeah, we made it.
Yeah.
A motion was made.
There you go.
Motion was made by Peterson, second by Teague.
Request a feasibility study, then add it to the master plan.
Yep.
So it didn't need anything else for that then, or?
You just prepare like a certificate, sign by Shane, saying you passed the motion to approve, that should suffice.
Yeah.
If they need to have more resolution, you can.
Can wait to put it on for the next meeting.
Alright. Okay, we go to resolutions, we got, uh, twelve A, resolution twenty seventeen ninety-nine, appointing election judges for the February thirteen twenty eighteen special recall election, and we have that in our packet.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
What do you, you should...
I don't think you can second that. I better second that one.
I already did in the last meeting, but didn't have a lot of choice.
The head judge is under regular...
Is that in the same one?
It's in the same resolution.
Okay, so also need to set the rate for the election judges, the hourly rate. In the past, we paid nine...
Nine fifty.
Nine fifty.
Does that go along with that?
That goes on this resolution.
Yep.
I'd make a motion to appoint the election judges and then set their wage at nine fifty.
And I'll second.
Do you wanna do anything separate for the head judges, or the same rate for both?
Same rate.
Do they do anything different? What's that? Do they do anything different?
The head judges, they're responsible if there's any issues or anything, they're the ones that have to spearhead to resolve those issues.
I think Excel will be okay with being paid the same.
They're not tasked on that.
No.
That's exempt from the contract, so.
Alright, so we have the motion then, and it's nine fifty?
Yep.
And Tony's abstaining, so is, uh, motion, you gonna second it Pam?
Yes.
Motion made in second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Posed.
I'll make a motion for a resolution two thousand seventeen one hundred, appointing those election judges to this special election.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Next, twelve C, resolution twenty seventeen one oh one, approving the twenty seventeen tax levy collectible in twenty eighteen. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Alright, next we got resolution twenty seventeen one oh eight, amended resolution approving payment to Rainier Contracting Inc. for work completed on the stabilization ponds.
This is the same as last time, um, the last resolution from the last meeting, except, uh, they deleted the change order. They have some more review to go through with the USDA. So they did not approve it, um, it'll probably be coming later, in a different... This is a format they had, um, prepared with.
Something on their end wasn't right?
It's the contractor's end, yeah. So.
I'd make a motion for resolution twenty seventeen one oh two, amending the other one.
Second that.
Motion made in second, it all in favor? Aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries, twelve E, resolution twenty seventeen one oh three, approving year-end transfers. We have that in our packet too. Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
Make a motion to approve year-end transfers on twenty seventeen one oh three.
Second that.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Next, resolution twenty seventeen one oh four, approval of the twenty eighteen budget. That is also in our packet, any questions about that resolution?
I should be good on the motion to approve the twenty eighteen budget.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries. And then the resolution that we have on our desk, resolution twenty seventeen one oh five, secretary's certificate regarding corporate resolutions.
So I'm assuming I need to not put on that.
Add her, the signer on the investments?
Yeah.
What she had to obtain? Being she's one of the signers, yeah. So right now I'm the only one apparently on the investments to have a signer. So I'd like to put Pam as mayor pro temp and Kim as finance clerk on there. Can I get any changes or the first ones from that that's new?
Yep, makes sense.
Make a motion to approve twenty seventeen one oh five.
Second it.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Thirteen consent calendar, we got the municipal counts payable and the municipal counts receivable. Anybody have any questions and comments about the consent?
Motion to approve that?
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries, unfinished business, nothing new business. Mayor and council communications, I had, uh, I wanted this included in our packet too, because, uh, Dale had indicated to me about his appointment here, and I thought it was worthy, that, uh, Chief Johnson got appointed to the Minnesota State Fire Chiefs Association Board of Directors. And I think that's quite an honor and, uh, wanted everybody to be aware of that. So, you have that for your information.
You have one more, uh, we got a thank you from, uh, the Tracy Lyons Club for, uh, their soup supper, the use of the multipurpose center for allowing them to use the building, no charge.
They're very welcome. And also I would, uh, say that my last meeting will be January eighth. On January twelfth, I'll be sworn in as a district court judge. So, I'd be able to preside over that last meeting, and then I could say it on, do I have to sign something at the last meeting, or just say it like when I've resigned by?
Just submit a resignation, and then if you're going to resign, when, when will you, will you resign at the meeting, or after the meeting?
Probably what I would do is, um, I could do it after the meeting, I may, have a resignation effective, uh, January ninth. I'll just do that.
Sure. Accepting it and declaring a vacancy. And appointing whomever is selected to be mayor pro temp at that point would fill your seat.
Yep.
And the seat that fills that would be open.
Gotcha.
Do we have to wait till that time to advertise for the...
What's that?
Do we have to wait until after that to advertise for the vacancy?
Yeah, you first have to declare it, so you have to wait until the resignation is accepted and declared vacancy. But I think there should be enough, hopefully, information about that, that people are aware of that.
So, that's that. Anybody have anything else?
I'd like to say congratulations again on your...
Yeah, it's Monday's.
No. Thank you, I, I... Thank you, I, I, thank you very much, I, I I feel very humbled and I'm very thankful and I feel very blessed and I'm just thankful.
Motion adjourned?
Yes. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you.